Guzzano, did I say that correctly?
You did.
All right, congratulations. Go ahead and say a few words.
Sure. Well, I'm first honored to be here. Nice to meet everyone. My name's Michael Guzzano, resident here in Newport Beach with my wife and four-and-a-half-year-old daughter. I work for a real estate developer and have worked in different capacities in the real estate industry over the last 20 years. And just really happy to be here and to help out.
Awesome. Well, we're happy to have you here. So we're going to move on to the next item, which is the election of officers. And then, given that not all the commissioners are present this evening, could I get a motion to continue the election of officers to the next meeting of July 17th?
Yeah, Chair, I'm happy to make the motion for the election of officers so that we can have all of the commissioners present.
I'll make a second.
Great. Do we have a vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving on. This is the time for public comments. And this is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, but are generally within the purview of the planning commission. So if you'd like to make your comments, please come forward and make your comments three minutes or less. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests for continuances tonight.
Okay, moving on to consent items. The minutes of the June 19th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Would anyone from the audience wish to comment on the minutes from June 19th? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners?
Chair, I'm happy to make a motion to support the minutes.
Would you be open to?
Mr. Moders' edits.
There you go. We're conditioned to do that.
All right, a motion and a second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner Guzzano abstaining.
Okay, our next item, item number three. This is the Ford Road Townhomes. This is PA 2025-0049. This is an unaddressed property adjacent to 1650 Ford Road. Staff, do you have a presentation this evening?
Good evening, Chair, planning commissioners. My name is Jerry Arregui, Assistant Planner. This project is for the Ford Road Townhomes project. Project locations generally in the corner of MacArthur Boulevard and Bonita Canyon Drive. It's currently an existing undeveloped site. It's adjacent to an existing AT&amp;T facility. Across Bonita Canyon Drive are the Newport Bluffs Apartments. To the east and west is the Bonita Canyon Sports Park. To the south is the Harborview, a single-family neighborhood. And to the west is the Big Canyon Villas across MacArthur Boulevard. The site was included in the 2022 six-cycle housing element as a housing opportunity site, and subsequently was allocated as the Housing Opportunity Overlay Zoning District. The zoning district would allow for a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre and a maximum density of 50 dwelling units per acre. And the residential density would be allowed in addition to the underlying land use designation. Did want to note that any residential project on this site would have to meet the 20 dwelling unit per acre density minimum in order for residential to be built on the site. The property is currently undeveloped. Currently, there are trees and native grasslands that grow on the property naturally. The adjacent site is the AT&amp;T facility. It's a 35-foot building which houses phone and electrical equipment. There is a parking lot that's accessed from Ford Road. And there is an existing 50-foot wireless monopole on the property as well. There's also the adjacent park trail adjacent to the vacant property, which connects pedestrians and cyclists from Ford Road up to Bonita Canyon Drive. So into the details of the proposed project, it's for a 27-unit townhome residential community. Units would range in size from 1,900 square feet to 2,900 square feet and two to four bedrooms. Access to the property would have a shared driveway configuration with the adjacent AT&amp;T facility. There would be a gate proposed to restrict access to the AT&amp;T facility parking lot. The driveway would lead into the project's main drive aisles. These drive aisles would lead to each unit's individual garages located on the first floor. Each unit would have a two-car garage, as well as lead to various uncovered parking spaces that could be utilized for guests. The driveway would also be used for emergency and refuse access. Each unit would have residential trash bins located inside of the garages and would be staged along the drive aisles during pickup days. Also, the drive aisles would accommodate any service and delivery vehicles. And there are two specific delivery spaces that are on the property. There'd be a total of 66 parking spaces, including the garage spaces, the guest parking, and those delivery spaces. Also, the project does provide future residents with amenity areas. There'd be a picnic area, which has an outdoor kitchen, barbecue area, seating, and a detached pergola for shade. There's also an additional fire pit area that are located on the northern portion of the site. Also, the project would provide residents with access to the adjacent park trail, which provide connectivity to Ford Road up to Bonita Canyon Drive, as well as connectivity to the park itself. As part of the application, the project would also include a lot line adjustment, the lot line in between the vacant site and the AT&amp;T facility, which would increase the lot size from 1.06 acres to 1.16 acres. As part of that adjustment, the applicant would also repave and slightly reconfigure that AT&amp;T parking lot. And although not required, the applicant would also landscape rehabilitate some of the landscaping on the AT&amp;T facility in front of the property along Ford Road and along the interior of the AT&amp;T facility, as well as providing landscaping all throughout the project site. So there are two approvals that are required for this project. So a major site development review is required for any project that proposes five or more units with a track map. There's also a request for increased height. But I did want to note that earlier this year, the city council did, or last month actually, the city council adopted an ordinance to increase certain height limits within properties of the HO4 Newport Center subarea, which would better accommodate the development of residential development to better accommodate, to meet the minimum density requirements. And so if this item were to be heard next month, when the amendments would be already effective, that request wouldn't be required or would be requested. Also, part of the site development review is a request for a deviation of four multi-unit objective design standards. And the vesting tenure track map, it would be required to allow the individual sale of units as townhome units and also to allow the lot line adjustment. And also for environmental clearance, Section 15183 of the SEQUEL Guidelines would be required, which I'll discuss later in the presentation. So here are the findings that are required for a site development review, and those additional ones required for height. So the project would have to conform to the general plan, zoning code, and any other applicable standards. The project would have to have efficient arrangement of structures and would have to have a harmonious transition of structures, that the project's size would be compatible with adjacent development and that there's adequate landscaping and open space. And then the additional findings for height, again, which wouldn't be required, the item would be heard after the height amendments were to be effective. But those findings are that the project provides visual interest, that there is no abrupt scale change, and there's a gradual transition in structures, that there'd be no additional floor area, and that the project would provide additional amenities beyond those that are required, such as setbacks and open area. So these are the development standards required of the Housing Opportunity Overlay District within the Newport Center area. There's a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre and a maximum density of 50 dwelling units per acre. The project is proposing 23, which is on the lower end of what it would potentially be allowed. In terms of setbacks, the HO4 requires a very limited amount. In fact, zero feet is required for the front side and rear. And only a 20-foot setback is required along Bonita Canyon. And that 20-foot setback is actually only required for the upper floors of the project. But as shown there on the right, the project more than complies with the required setbacks. And these large setback areas allow for more open areas that would otherwise be allowed, or would otherwise be required, rather, and more landscaping along the perimeter of the property. For parking, as I previously mentioned, there are 66 parking spaces that are provided, which is five extra than the 61 that is required. For the common open space, that also exceeds the requirements. Again, that fire pit area and picnic area, as well as the private open space, will exceed the minimum requirements, which is provided with private balconies and covered patios. Again, just wanted to reiterate that the high limit for the property was increased to 48 feet. However, those amendments are not yet effective, but the project was designed with that height limit in mind. So here's a view of the existing site along Ford Road facing north. So this is a rendering of the project. This is one of the eight-unit buildings. It includes a contemporary coastal architecture design. There's much variation in materials. That includes, you can see the balcony areas that would be private areas used by residents, as well as, the project includes varied roof lines, as well as those covered patios on the upper floor and upper floor setbacks, which again are not required, but are just provided to provide more enhancement of the facade. This is a view from Bonita Canyon Drive facing south. There in the center, you can see the existing telecom monopole and a portion of that existing AT&amp;T building. And this is what the project would look like. Notably, these are the sides of the building. Typically, a normal residential structure, a side will not be articulated, but in this case, because it does face an arterial road, which experiences a lot of traffic and pedestrians, it does have more of an enhanced view along this side with those upper floor setbacks and those balconies, just to provide a better view from this side, as well as for the adjacent Newport Bluffs Homes across Bonita Canyon Drive. Also, the project does include enhanced landscaping on this portion of the property to further buffer that first floor. So only the portion of the second and third and fourth floors are visible from this side. So looking at the adjacent developments, across Bonita Canyon is the Newport Bluffs Apartments. Those do have a maximum building height of 50 feet. Currently, the buildings are three stories, built up to 35 feet. And they're separated by 185 feet from the project, again, from that busy arterial road. And there is trees that are landscaped in that center median that grow up to 60 feet. And then to the south, Harborview Community does have a maximum allowed height of 32 feet. But there are variation in heights, as there are one-story and two-story buildings throughout the community. But there is a separation of 230 feet from the nearest residential, single-unit residential property. And again, that's across Ford Road. And Ford Road is also landscaped. Center median has trees which grow up to a height of 60 feet. And adjacent to the site, there's a maximum building height of 37 feet, and the AT&amp;T building is 35 feet tall. And so because of the intervening roads and the large distances, and there's a change in scale of the structures, sadly, there is a harmonious change in scale from these adjacent developments to the project. So along with the Housing Opportunity Overlay Zoning Districts, the city council also adopted multi-unit objective design standards, which are standards that would apply to multi-unit developments that are at least 20 dwelling units per acre. So essentially, all of the properties within the Housing Opportunity Overlay District would have to comply with these standards. Notably, the project does comply with 48 of the 52 applicable standards, and are only requesting very minor deviations from four of those standards. And as included, as discussed in the staff report, staff believes that there's sufficient facts to support these minor deviations as the project still more than complies with the intent of these standards and their very negligible deviations. So with regard to environmental review, as part of the Housing Opportunity Overlay Zoning Districts, the city council also certified a final program EAR, which analyzed all those sites that were within the Housing Opportunity and analyzed all potential significant impacts. And as part of each subsequent project that would utilize the housing overlay, they'd be required to perform what's called a 15183 SEQUEL analysis, which essentially looks at each individual site within the context of the site and what's being proposed to ensure that there would be no additional impacts that were already addressed as part of the programmatic EAR. So in this case, the applicant's SEQUEL consultant, TMB Planning, did prepare a consistency analysis with that programmatic EAR. And it was peer-reviewed by the city's consultant, Killey Horn. And it was concluded that there are no additional significant impacts that were not already addressed, again, as part of that programmatic EAR. The city attorney's office also prepared a supplemental memo regarding Public Resources Code, Section 21080.66, which is regarding environmental review as well. And was provided to the commission for review. So staff did receive many comments for this project. There were some comments in support that noted that the project would provide housing that's needed in the area, as well as addressing housing shortages in the city, as well as throughout the state. But there were many letters received with concerns regarding traffic, parking, and vehicular access. Just wanted to touch on each of these individually. So with regard to traffic, the proposed project is projected to produce 182 average daily trips within a typical 24-hour period, including 11:00 morning and 14:00 afternoon trips during peak hours. And that value, 182, would encompass the total amount of trips associated with the project, including residences, guests, and any delivery or service vehicles. And so based on this projection, the project doesn't trigger the traffic phasing ordinance, which requires a traffic study. And so in this case, there is not additional traffic analysis that's required. And so staff believes that the forecasted trips will have a less insignificant impact on the roadway network. And as with all streets, the city's Public Works Department monitors traffic conditions to ensure that roadways are functioning properly. And we do have the city traffic engineer who's available to answer any more detailed questions regarding traffic and roadways. So regarding parking, there were some concerns that there would be some spillover effects from the project. Do just want to reiterate that only 61 spaces are required, but the applicant is providing 66 parking spaces. And again, every unit does have a two-car garage, and there are 10 guest parking spaces and two delivery spaces. There are some additional conditions of approval that staff is recommending to address some of these parking concerns, which I'll address in the next slide. So another big item of concern was regarding vehicular access, with regard to how access would occur, as well as vehicles exiting the property could potentially... There were some concerns regarding pedestrian conflict with vehicles. And staff is also recommending some conditions of approval regarding that, which I'll go over in this slide here. So the first slide would address the spillover parking. I'm not going to read the whole condition, but essentially it would require that the CCNRs would state that garages be used for vehicles and not for storage. And it would also prohibit residents from parking in those guest spaces and prohibit any parking within the adjacent park parking lot. The second condition is just reinforcing that there would be an access easement on the adjacent property to ensure that there will always be access through that property so that future curb cuts or future access wouldn't be required elsewhere. Staff also wanted to add these conditions, which were not included in the draft resolution. The first one is just stating that the applicant would pay all applicable development impact fees in accordance with the adopted fee schedule. The second actually would address some concerns related to vehicles exiting the property. That condition is regarding the city's site distance requirements, which requires that in a driveway, there would be low-lying landscaping and walls just to ensure that vehicles have adequate sight view of any pedestrians or cyclists passing along in front of that driveway. Just want to note, too, that that's a very typical situation. It's not something that's unique or that's inherently unsafe. It's seen all throughout the city. And then finally, staff wanted to include a modification to Condition of Approval Number 44, just to add a qualifier. It's a condition related to runoff. The qualifier that we would like to add is just that this item would be subject to satisfaction of the committee development director. So with that, staff does recommend the commission to conduct a public hearing, find that the project is exempt from additional SEQUEL study pursuant to Section 15183 of the SEQUEL Guidelines, and adopt the resolution approving the major site development review and the vesting tenure track map. We do have the applicant and his SEQUEL team and project architect available for questions, and staff is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, very thorough. Appreciate that. So commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Okay. Thank you for the comment about parking. And having that added to the CCNRs, that was going to be one of my questions. And then I think we just wanted to clarify, or I would like to clarify in regard to Condition 20, that there was some ability for the applicant's landscape architect to provide additional planting along Bonita Canyon and other areas that are city-owned properties? Is that the intent of Condition 20?
Yes, Chair, that is the intent. So that condition provides for latitude for the city to work with the applicant to provide enhanced landscaping around the project site.
Okay, great. And I don't know if there was any discussion about the timing for the monopole. Maybe that's a question for the applicant. I'll come back to that in a little bit. So no other comments? Then we'll go ahead and ask about the commissioners for ex parte communications, starting on my left with Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. I have had a conversation with the applicant and the applicant's consultant.
I did as well. I had a conversation with the applicant's consultant.
Had a conversation with the applicant and the applicant's consultant.
Same conversation with the applicant and their consultant, as well as driving by the site.
I met with the applicant and their consultant.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Maybe you could just come forward and verify that you've read the conditions of approval with the additional conditions proposed by staff and agree with them?
Absolutely. Chairman Rosin, members of the planning commission, my name is Michael Torres. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant. We accept the conditions, the revised conditions, as well as the new conditions. And I just want to take a moment to thank Simone and his staff, and Jaime, and Yolanda, and Brad, and Sless, and everyone else, and especially Jerry, who did a fantastic job on this, who was very easy to work with, very diligent. And my understanding is today is his two-year anniversary with the city. So good job, Jerry, and we're just very appreciative. But thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I want to hold on just a second, just to give the opportunity for commissioners to ask you any questions. Commissioners? No questions of the applicant? How about the monopole?
Yep, so absolutely. We will comply with the condition of approval. At this point, we don't know the exact timing of when it's going to be moved, but we will do it in compliance with the condition of approval.
Okay, fair enough. We'll go ahead and, it sounds like you're good.
Thank you very much, guys.
All right, I guess before we move on, seeing that there are several people here, just a couple of items to discuss. Number one, please refrain from commentary from the audience. And then you're welcome to come forward and speak in regard to the project. You have three minutes. And then let's try to keep the comments fresh, if you could, please, so that we're not repeating the same comments over and over. So, or does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
This is why I fill out the blue card?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks for my three minutes and the sunshine. I appreciate to see grassroots citizenship in action. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Bob Lang, United States Marines, retired. I have some background in this. I used to own the lease of the now-closed Buffalo Ranch right across the street from this, where I office for 15 years. I have lived in the Harborview area for the last 25 years. I was on the development group with the Irvine Company when we built Harborview Knowles, where I now live. And the presentation we made to this board when we got the permission for Harborview Knowles was that the end result would be that park structure that you see here would be connected. We know that parks are more than the sum of their parts. And if they're not connected, then they really don't add up to the community value that they would if they were the Great Park, the Parks in New York, the Park in Irvine. When I looked at this, I saw several major flaws. This is a pig with a lot of lipstick on it. The idea that we're going to prevent those people from parking in the parking lot for the sports is naive and it's extreme. One would look at that on the weekend, there's already a parking problem. We would be naive to think that two parking places per unit would be sufficient because at this level of entry into Newport Beach with this location, there are going to be subletting and multiple, multiple cars. I didn't see any address of the school access. And if one were to go down that pathway... I didn't see any address of the school access, and if one were to go down that pathway between the proposed development and the pickleball courts on any school day, one would see hundreds of cycles going down that way directly in front of that shared access to the AT&amp;T building. If we looked at the AT&amp;T building, which was developed with 50s and 60s technology, that would probably be classified, and I'm a licensed hazardous materials contractor, a general contractor, and a general building contractor, and I can tell you that that, based on my Marine Corps background, would probably classify as a toxic waste dump in terms of the amount of asbestos in it. The monopole, it would be interesting if we're my age, but if we're a female trying to get pregnant, it's a big deal. If we're children living next to it, it's like standing in front of a radar dome of my F-14. So it doesn't work. So this kind of shared development wedged into this small place just doesn't work for this part of the community. We look at that rabbit Warren, and we look at the area around it, it's incongruous. It's obviously wedged in. It doesn't fit into any part of that community, and it pushes the envelope of available development. And that's about my... the end of my three minutes. Thank you for your time. Would there have been any questions for me?
Thank you for your service. Next speaker, please. If you could please refrain from clapping or that kind of stuff, it would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sabuhi Karim, and I'm a resident of the Harborview Homes. And, you know, I'm clearly not for increased traffic in the area, et cetera, but the thing that stood out to me in this whole project was that there is a 50-foot radio tower that emits radio frequency electromagnetic rays. And the common understanding of cell phone towers is that the further away you get from them, the safer it is. And from what I've been reading, about 400 feet is where things are safe. Now, it doesn't seem to me like the development that you have in mind is the homes are 400 feet from the cell tower. It... you know, I could be wrong. It's hard for me to judge, but that is something that you need to take into account. And I realize the science on this is not proven in the United States, but it is cause of great concern in European studies. So I think, just like asbestos, this could end up being a big environmental issue down the road when more data is available. And I think that the city faces some exposure if down the road, the cell tower is proven to be, you know, not beneficial to people's health. So it's... and we are aware that there are asbestos companies that have been sued much after they've gone out of business because of this issue, of their environmental issue, which was not known at the time that they were manufacturing that product. So my point to you is, I'd like our planners to do research into this matter, and also, it doesn't seem like the SEQA really looked at this tower issue at all. You know, it was more in terms of traffic flows and things like that. So I... my recommendation is that the SEQA should include a evaluation of the impact of the cell phone tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Craig Gordon. I'm a resident of the Port Streets of the Harborview Community and have owned a home there for almost 30 years. So regularly commute across Ford Road, in and out of that community, and have firsthand knowledge of the traffic patterns and the parking that exists currently as it relates to the parks that are surrounding this proposed project. I am very concerned about the safety associated with this project and what it will do to the available parking. I know the commissioner or the planner must feel the same way because he's suggested this conditional approval of restricting the homeowners from keeping anything in their garages except cars. I think that's highly impractical... impractical... impracable. I would challenge if any of us actually have something in our garage other than our cars. I certainly do. Every community in Newport Beach that I've ever driven through has lots of cars parked in front of their houses, even though they have two or three-car garages. That's just the reality of life. People have bikes, they have stuff to store. And the challenge, I think, that you're going to create by approving this project is that even today, without all these units, without additional cars parking on that public street, there is a safety issue of parents dropping off their kids for the Bonita Canyon Sports Park, which are highly-used soccer fields. I can't tell you how many times I've come in and out of my neighborhood, and there are not only cars parked all along the sides, but they're double-parked to let people in and out because there's really no parking lots for that section of the park. The pickleball court parking lot is always packed, and cars are parked down Ford Road. So I think it is very probable, highly likely, that this project with the density that's being proposed is going to create additional cars parking on Ford Road. There's no way the city could even police whether people are storing stuff in their garage. It is... you're going to have cars parked on that public street. They're going to take up spaces that would otherwise be used by the users of the park, and it's going to create a significant parking concern. And that's just the challenge of moving forward with a project with this density essentially being built in the middle of a park, as a previous... one of the previous public commentators made. This is two parks, and it just is not suitable for this density of project. I also have a concern about the potential impact to the noise associated with the pickleball courts and this building being so tall and the commission approving a variance of the height. If you look at the side of this, of the tall building, it'll be right next to the existing pickleball parking lot, which is very close to the pickleball courts. There are already issues associated with the pickleball paddle play, and I think this will create an echo effect that, at a minimum, should be studied prior to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Derek. I'm a Port Street resident also. By the way, I'd love to have the comfort of knowing that each of the commissioners has actually walked on Ford Road and actually seen this project as opposed to simply looking at those photographs. But talking about the photographs, it was only three days ago that I got a phone call... no, actually, it wasn't an email from somebody who lived in the Port Streets. Actually, it was to my wife, saying, "By the way, did you know that we're going to talk about this Ford Road thing?" And I didn't. And she was sort of surprised that it had been scheduled at, you know, July 3rd, before a weekend. And meanwhile, I go walking in that area almost every day, and I had no idea of that. I hope you got the photographs that I sent to Jerry. By the way, I want to thank Jerry. He was very responsive. I sent him a letter yesterday, and he was very, very professional, excellent, and responded to everything that I thought about. Anyway, if you didn't look at these photographs, look at it. This is a picture of the notice. It doesn't come up above your knee. It's in small print. You'd have to be a midget with a magnifying glass to even know that this wasn't going to be heard today. That is not notice. That's not public notice. I gave you two pictures. There's another one from Bonita Canyon. I bet you can't even see the sign on my photograph of Bonita Canyon. Anyway, from my background, I can go and use an expression that you will be familiar with, I hope. Everything that has been said previously, I hereby incorporate by reference. So I'm not going to repeat all the traffic and other stuff like that. My chief concern is... oh, let me say, my evaluation of what happens here, I've never done this before, is that the purpose of the report is that it's to go through an applications from some private investor or developer, compare it to what the city requires, see how they matched it up, see how well they've done, see what the exceptions are, and see whether or not the planner thinks this works or it will work with some exceptions like that. That's what I've gathered from what I hear today. That's fine, except that, I must say, this report, which was very thorough, as you've said before, reads like a brief in favor of the development. I don't think we're in that stage yet. I don't think we should be briefing in favor of the development. Here's an example. One of the photographs that was displayed on the screen... by the way, the first photograph that Jerry put up on the screen, you can see my house. I can see my... well, you can see the roof of my house, my 32-foot house or something, whatever it is. That 32-foot house is pretty much standard in that community. This four-story building is going to be at least 16 feet higher. Now, in standing in this room, that doesn't seem like much, but that building will be the tallest building within miles of Bonita Canyon, of Harborview Streets, of Bell Court, of anything. That will be the... this is where you come into Newport Beach. This is an urban building. This building belongs in Harborview. Sorry, that... wait for the three minutes. It belongs at Fashion Island. I just don't think this has been thought through. I'm just not getting an impression that this has really been considered, and it's not going to go in the right direction. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
My name's Steve Robinson. I've lived in the Port Streets for 42 years, and I pretty much second what everybody's said without repeating that. But I don't know if any of you have children that use those parks or the soccer fields. It's already super-impacted. Try and get a pickleball court. It just doesn't exist. So the other thing that's changed since this project was proposed, I think in 2019, is that the area is even more impacted than it was, what, six years ago? You look around and see all the kids with their e-bikes now. They're racing around. They don't pay attention when they cross streets, even within the community or going up to the park. It's super-dangerous, and 182 trips plus whatever guests of the residents in that complex are going to be coming, deliveries, the Amazon guy races around. I don't know. It's shoehorning it into a lot that just doesn't seem practical to me. I wish the city would acquire it, make it a nice park. We're short on parks anyhow. You see how busy it is already. Why don't you just buy it and let's be done with this? Do we have to fight this every couple... you know, every couple of years? I don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Wade Womack. I'm a resident of the Port Streets. Thank you for giving me opportunity to speak. This is the first I've heard of it, so there's a lot to digest, and a few bullet points of observations. It looks here, a major site development, and this is the stakeholder process, the transparency. I feel like this process is missing transparency. I am dumbfounded that the developer hasn't reached out to the public with some public outreach and stakeholder meetings. I would ask that you postpone any action on this in favor of some stakeholder meetings so that we can all digest it and work together to figure out what's right for the community. I think the parking is a problem. I think it's going to be impossible to police the parking in the park that's meant for the park for recreation. It's improbable that the folks over there in any new development aren't going to be dominating that parking, and it's public parking, so it'll be impossible to police it from the HOA or from a city perspective. I noticed your... the staff's presentation mentioned four out-of-compliance or issues that they're dismissing, but there's four issues. I don't even know what they were. I got to look at them for two seconds. I don't believe this project's consistent with the community on that side of Bonita Canyon, the Port Streets, the houses that are adjacent. My kids rode their bike to Corona Del Mar High School every day through there for a few years, and that driveway is going to be right where the kids are riding their bikes to school. More traffic. I'd like to point out that I think this is a speculator deal. If they can get this... developer can get this body to buy off on it, they make a bunch of money and get their development. The flip side is, if you deny it or postpone it, we can all talk about it and figure it out, get some transparency on this, then there's no pain. No one loses. No one's getting... it's not a property rights thing. They don't own the property, as I understand it. I hope I'm correct on that, but I think it's a spec deal. So denying it or postponing it, it's no harm, no foul. So at the very least, let's get some eyes on this thing, some transparency, some stakeholder buy-in, and some public outreach. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your service to our community. My name is Blair Walsh, and I'm a homeowner and resident here in Newport Beach. I moved to this city and purchased a home a few years ago, and I did so for many reasons that we all cherish: the beautiful weather, the coastline, the quality of life, and the thoughtful leadership we've consistently seen from our city council and planning commission. One thing that stood out to me early on, and still does, is Newport's strong commitment to protecting property rights while also making sure that, as we grow, we do so in a way that honors the unique charm of our community. Whether it's Corona Del Mar, Balboa Island, or Newport Coast, every part of our city has its own identity. That's part of what makes Newport Beach so special. The Ford Road Town Homes Project is a great example of how to balance smart growth with preserving that character. The proposed design is a natural fit with the neighboring Port Streets, which is one of the most beloved residential areas in our city. The townhomes reflect similar scale, style, materials that feel familiar yet modern. It's thoughtful designs like this that elevate a project and make it something the community should truly embrace. Additionally, the project improves an underutilized site, upgrades the adjacent AT&amp;T property, and creates real homeownership opportunities in a city where those are increasingly hard to find. In every way, this is a responsible, community-conscious development that reflects the values of Newport Beach. I respectfully urge your support. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Rosin, members of the commission, my name is Jim Moser. The scale of the project actually doesn't look similar to me, but I had three comments. First, on handwritten page 39, there's a finding C that is addressing a required... a fact C that's addressing a required finding of consistency with our general plan, and that fact says that the 27 units produced by this application will help the city to meet its sixth-cycle regional housing needs allocation. I was not aware... I believe that 27 units are going to be market rate, and I was not aware that the city had a need for any more market-rate units to meet its RENA requirement. As I understand it, what we need is affordable units, and according to our housing element, to be consistent with that, it is saying that even with the rezoning of 8,000-plus new units, we will need 40% of those to be affordable to meet our goal. And in particular, the housing site analysis in the housing element for this particular site, which is site number 141, was anticipating that there would be 25 affordable units developed on this site. So the fact that this project or application is not producing any affordable units, as I understand it, seems to me a finding of inconsistency with our general plan and a particular housing element rather than a finding of consistency. Second comment, and this is kind of a personal question, is there is a fact J5 on page 50 and a condition of approval 15 on handwritten page 60 mentioning that the applicant is going to have to pay a park-in-lue fee of $38,400 per unit. going to have to pay a park-in-lue fee of $38,400 per unit. That's of interest to me because I was on the general plan, I am on the General Plan Advisory Committee, and last night we reviewed the recreation element that involves the development of new parks. And as an individual, I'm curious, the implication in both of these is that if the application had been filed later, the in-lue fee would be different. It seems to imply that they would have to pay more or maybe less, I'm not sure. So, I'm curious how the fee, $38,400, differs from what they would have to pay if it was today. And then the third and final comment is that at a recent council meeting, we understood that the City Council is looking for a potential site to move the fire station that is currently across the hill here in Newport Center to a new location. And it would seem that if we need a new location for a fire station, this corner of Bonita Canyon and MacArthur is an ideal centrally-located location. So, if we have vacant property there, as planners, you might be asking, and we don't need more market-rate units, perhaps we do need a location for a fire station, and maybe that would be a better use for the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Janice Grace. I've been a Port Street resident and owner seven years. I'm asking that--
Could you come forward to the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Thank you. It'll be easier to hear you.
Okay. Janice Grace, 27-year owner and resident of Harborview. I ask that the vote be delayed because there are so many things that I think have not really been addressed thoroughly. I'm going to start with that that property is currently landlocked, and although that was addressed in that the developer will be required to make an access easement there, it's really not in any of the documents yet, so it seems a little bit premature. The traffic study that's not being required, I'm wondering what the capacity for that intersection is, because on school days, traffic backs up in both directions, 20 to 30 cars every day. So, I'm surprised about that traffic study. And the environmental site assessment that was online on this project is dated 2018. I can't imagine that that's even relevant today. So, that's something to think about. About notice to the neighbors, I looked at the mailing list. Only 10 neighbors were actually notified by mail, if you can believe that mailing list. So, those of us who know about this, that are here speaking and concerned, we only knew about this a few days ago. So, that's why we're here to speak on behalf of our neighbors. But I don't, I think it's pretty irresponsible to notify 10 neighbors and think that the entire community has been placed on notice, you know, especially with the tiny little green signs that were on-site that just appeared a couple of days ago. So, there's that. Jerry mentioned that there were a lot of letters in support of the project. There were approximately 120 letters, seven of eight of which were in support. The rest of them were against the project, or at least against the density and height of the project, I should say, on the parking issues. The seven or eight people, there was one, I think, that lives in the Port Streets. The other people who were in support of the project, they don't even live in the community, and every single one of those letters was generated from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM yesterday afternoon. So, it's almost like someone went on a campaign to produce a bunch of letters and supported the project, which is a little bit suspect. Anyway, the height, I looked at the general plan, and it says that the height needs to keep in, be in keeping with the bulk, scale, and aesthetic. Four stories is not within the bulk and scale and aesthetic of the community. Our homes are limited to two stories, and even the bluffs is only, is limited to three. So, I don't understand how that can be. And the project plans actually show a 49-foot-plus height, not 48, which is the limit. So, there's that as well. The landscape plan that was shown here is not the landscape plan that was available to the public, which shows 40-foot trees. The landscape plan doesn't show that those are going to be salvaged to provide a buffer. So, I have other comments, but my time is up. But I really ask that this be delayed until community input can be considered.
Thank you. Next comment, next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name's Katie Drown. I am a resident of the Port Streets, and I am here today representing a handful of young families in the neighborhood with very young children who could not be in attendance, since, again, we did not know and we were not forewarned about this happening, and then let alone it being 6:00 PM the night before the Fourth of July, when most people are traveling or out of town. So, I am here on behalf of many families in the Port Streets who are out of town and were not given enough notice to attend this meeting. First of all, I would like to say thank you for your quick responses via email. I really appreciate it. You've been very diligent getting back to us. But I do want to also say that there were just now a few concerns, one of them being that you said that the HOA will require, you know, all residents to park within their garage, which, again, maybe you can enforce it, maybe not. But once all of those townhomes are purchased and all of those owners attend an HOA meeting, they can just change that rule. Like, that's how it works. So, they could just change that very easily, in which case then all of those cars will overflow into the parking lot and to just the street. I also wanted to touch on the EMF radiation issue, because I think it is for a reason that there has not been any, you know, living buildings where people are supposed to live around that AT&amp;T site, for good reason, because unfortunately, there are transformers throughout the Port Streets. There are transformers about every four blocks located in somebody's backyard, and when they built the Port Streets, they did not know of the long-term health effects that this would cause. But now we know that there are long-term health effects of this. And I know personally people that grew up in the neighborhood that now have existing health issues, and, you know, you can say blame it on certain variables or variables or not, but there are, there is a constant there, and so that definitely needs to be looked into further. And so, that is a major concern. I have an EMF wave detector. Mine's probably not strong enough for the AT&amp;T site, but I'm happy to go over there and EMF wave it. Also, with all due respect, the one person that has opposed this project, that has spoken today, is a real estate agent. Again, with all due respect, you are a real estate agent, so this project is definitely going to be of benefit to you. I actually also am in real estate, so I can see both sides, but here I am standing up, speaking out against this, because it is not a business opportunity. It is for the betterment of our community that I am speaking out against it. I think that was my only, those were my, those were my only points. And thank you for your time. Thank you for listening, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, real quick, we, I just want to make sure. We've heard the traffic. We've heard the parking. We've heard the cell towers. We've heard the sound. We've heard the noticing. We've heard all these points. So, please be very clear in terms of when you come up to, please bring new items to our attention.
Hi, my name is Carol Hatch. I'm a 30-year, almost resident of the Port Streets. I know we've already covered the traffic and everything. I don't know if anybody addressed specifically leaving the neighborhood. When you're coming out on Newport Hills Road, it's just one stop sign, and there is no stop sign any other way for anybody coming up and down Ford Road. So, when people are coming into the neighborhood to go to the park and drop off the kids, the soccer fields and the baseball fields, they drop and come up to the entrance of Newport Hills Road and make a U-turn right there. And as they're making the U-turn, we're at the stop sign trying to exit. So, right there's one point, and then you'll have all the people coming down, which they already do, from pickleball and the little totlot soccer field coming at the same time. So, I can't tell you how many times. And also, you can't see up the little bit of the slopes. When you're at the stop sign, you really have to go past the stop sign to look up the hill to see the cars coming. So, there needs to be some sort of another stop sign, or, I'm not sure, somebody mentioned speed bumps. But if you go walk the area on a busy day, you can see how that happens. The parking on the street is 10 to 6 is not allowed on Ford Road. I don't know how, if you have overflow, I don't know how they're going to monitor that. HOA can't possibly be responsible to monitor overflow into that parking lot. I agree with the first speaker about the park and the aesthetics of everything, but for the Port Street residents speaking out in 1996, we wouldn't have those parks. It's because the Port Streets neighborhood and the citizens and residents of the area came together and fought the Irvine Company and the little banana there for those fields against Irvine Company placing apartments, affordable apartments, which, that's great, but not in that little space they were going to do it. And so, we fought, and we got parks and recreation and soccer. And I don't think, unfortunately, that other part for AT&amp;T wasn't included in that, because that would have been awesome to have more park, not a four-story building. And the four corners of that intersection, those housing units are below, I mean, they may be our two- and three-story houses, but they're not condominiums that are four feet high. I'm a little confused on the $38,000 per unit that the city gets from the developer. I don't know where, and where happens to that money. I don't, I was confused on that. And, oh, what is the price point for the condos? Because the average rate is about 11 to $1,500 a square foot. So, it seems to me the condos, those townhouses would have to start at $2.5 million to make money. So, I don't know. People are like, we need more housing. It seems to be not Jeep housing. And is there an HOA required, and what is that HOA amount? I think those were my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Eric Mickleton. I'm a 20-year resident of Newport Beach. I am standing here in full support of the project. I think we are in need of smart-growth housing in the city. The project is beautiful, well-thought-through. It meets zoning codes, and there's no variance on the project. The AT&amp;T site is a, is an ISO, and is better used for it. So, I'm in full support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, honorable city commissioners. My name is Sam Maravan. I've been a resident of Port Streets for the last 15 years. Given traffic, environmental concerns, a lot of things have been discussed already. I really want to focus on, really, the impact on the local wildlife. That's an issue that I hope you guys prioritize. Our, our area near Bonita Canyon Sports Park supports birds, small mammals, reptiles that depend on native vegetation. The plan for 27 townhomes on, you know, 1.2 acres with landscaping zones, reduced from four feet to three and a half or three feet, will shrink critical habitat. And, you know, the 48-foot height adjustment and zero-foot separation in some areas could fragment their living spaces, disrupt nesting, and increase runoff harming water resources. The new trail connection will bring more human activity, likely disrupting sensitive species and altering park ecological balance. Without a wildlife impact study, we risk losing biodiversity that defines our community. So, I urge you to reconsider this project, delay it, or require an ecological assessment to protect our wildlife. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. The, as I look at the plan and the heights, it looks like you're building an albatross. That, that going up MacArthur, there's a big, the turn right there as you turn onto to Bonita Canyon--
Sir, please state your name for the record.
Robert Bice. There is a right turn as you go off of MacArthur onto Bonita Canyon. With a four-story building there, that thing's going to be pretty well blocked off. And in many ways, I think it's going to look like, as you go up Jamboree, about the time, place where the new hospital is, and you look off to your left, there are all these very large apartments, and this is going to take on that same complexion. I'm not sure that's what you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Polly Verifai. We live in the Port Streets. We live in a house, I have two children. We live in a house adjacent to the park. And there's a lot of concerns that we have. I, the timing of this meeting was, I think, interesting, and the lack of notice, as everybody else has expressed. The congestion exiting the Port Streets is a big one, getting to school and CDM and just on the freeway. I think the parking is going to be a major issue. I know people have mentioned this, but one thing I would like to propose is absolutely no parking overnight on either side of Ford Road. The, the city, when we went through the whole pickleball thing, the city had promised us things that they would enforce for the pickleball courts, and that has not taken place, like playing on the, playing pickleball on the tennis courts, and it's just gotten awful there. So, I just don't see the enforcement really happening, like, like somebody just said that they would park overnight in the, in the pickleball parking lot. And I just don't see that getting, anybody doing anything about it. So, I would like to also propose to slow down the speed limit to 25 on Ford Road. Right now, I believe it's 45. And maybe put in a stop sign when you turn left or go straight on Ford Road to Newport Hills Drive. And then the other thing I'm concerned about, which I haven't heard anything about, is are the kids from this new project allowed to go to Anderson Elementary School? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Sperry, and while I don't live in the Port Streets, I live nearby in one Ford Road. I've been in Newport Beach for the last eight years, and while I didn't grow up here, this is where my wife and I are raising our family, and we're proud to call it home. I'm here tonight in strong support of the Ford Road Town Home Project. I am a local real estate agent. I am a developer. I am not involved in this project, and I have nothing to gain from this project, but I will tell you that I'm a proud supporter of developers who are looking to make a difference in housing, especially with the current lack of inventory, really, across the country. I think what stands there today, the AT&amp;T building is an ISO with vacant land next door. This is the perfect opportunity to bring homes on a prime piece of underutilized land. This project actually adds value. It's beautiful for sale townhomes, and that gives families a shot at actually staying in Newport. I think that matters. Homeownership in this town is increasingly out of reach, especially for younger generations. And as a real estate agent, I do work with families with kids who are struggling to buy homes in this community. I do find it interesting that people who live in the Port Streets would oppose this when teardowns are now $4 million and homes are now selling for up to $13 million. I think this gives people an actual chance of buying a home. We don't have land. We don't have inventory, and this kind of project that's high-density is what's needed, because we don't have that land. So, this project provides exactly the kind of thoughtful, high-quality housing we need more of. It reminds me of the project over on Irvine Avenue near Mariners Elementary called Mariner Shores. I think the designs are beautiful. They're well-thought-out. They look like what belongs in this community. I've seen that the project is compliant up on the board. There's no variances needed. There's no bending the rules. It passes SEQA. I have parked plenty of times on primetimes on Saturdays at the soccer fields, Bonita Canyon Sports Park 5, and for birthday parties and soccer games at the park. Canyon Sports Park 5, and for birthday parties and soccer games at the park. Usually I could park in that parking lot even when there's a wait for pickleball courts. And I've had, if not, I'm able to park pretty close right there to the playground. So I think this also brings a financial impact, that the property tax revenue will help schools, infrastructure, and the services we all here rely on. So in short, this to me is well designed. It's a responsible project. Yes, I understand that people don't want to see new development, but this is needed. So I strongly urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers this evening? Please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Deborah Klein. I'm a resident of Port Streets and prior to that, 10 years in CDM. I'm still a homeowner there. I wasn't planning on speaking, so I don't really have anything set up to speak. But in listening to my fellow Port Street homeowners, and especially the ones with kids, I have great concern about this project. My daughter played soccer on the Field 5. There's nowhere to park. You have to double park, or I've seen many people park actually in the Port Streets and just, it's a pretty long walk, but they'll walk. So we're already having people potentially from outside of the neighborhood that we don't know that are parking in the Port Streets. And, you know, who knows along they're staying there. But it's not a great feeling to have strangers kind of parking in your neighborhood that you don't know who they are. We're a tightly knit community, we don't know each other, we know each other as kids. So to have strangers coming in and parking in our neighborhood is just a little alarming. One thing, you wanted something new to be brought up, the height. So someone mentioned that this building is much higher than all of our Port Street homes are allowed to be. So for the homeowners, again, we didn't get much notice, if any. Those homeowners that are on, I think it's Port Bristol, that align up against Ford Road, if you have a building across the way that's much taller, they've just lost their privacy. These people can now see into their yards, they can see potentially into their homes when the drapes are open. I don't know if anyone's thought about that. And these homeowners should be notified and they should, it shouldn't be on July 3rd at 6 o'clock at night. So I would request that you postpone making a decision, make sure at the very least those homeowners are involved. And please reconsider doing this project at all, but at least please postpone it till the majority of the Port Streets people and especially those along Ford Road across from the project have a chance to be notified and educated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers this evening? Okay. Seeing none, does the applicant wish to respond?
Chair Rosine, if I may, I can go ahead and respond to some of the questions that have been raised as well as planning and then see if perhaps the applicant would like to add some additional comments.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yolanda Summerhill with the City Attorney's Office. I first wanted to start with respect to the noticing requirements. We do three types of noticing, which includes publication, posting, which we did hear reference to the sign being relatively small, as well as postage, so mailing an actual postage letter to individuals within 300 feet of the project. So while all of the residents may not have received that notice, I think once you compile all those together that we have met the noticing requirements. The second thing that I wanted to touch on was with respect to the monopole. The monopole is not before you this evening. That said, health issues associated with telecommunications sites are not something that's within the zoning jurisdiction. There is no distance requirement from a residential property. But again, we did hear that that monopole would be relocated, and when that project comes forward, it'll go through the appropriate procedures. The third thing I wanted to touch on was with respect to this project and where it stands in the broader scheme of things. So the City Council adopted the six-cycle housing element. This was included as a housing opportunity sites. We are in full implementation of our housing element. It does meet the general plan as well as the zoning code requirements. And so that does trigger what's called the Housing Accountability Act. And so we are heavily constrained in terms of the number of public hearings that we can have, as well as what we can do to deny a project or oppose additional conditions. So while I can understand that there are generic concerns with respect to parking and so forth that does meet the requirements, and we do have significant limitations in terms of denying and/or continuing a project at extreme levels. And then I did hear some comments with respect to CEQA. We did have a lengthy CEQA consistency memorandum, and that was as part of a certified EIR. Once that EIR is certified, I like to say that the vault is shut. And so I do think that that memorandum fully covers everything, and this project was contemplated as a part of that. You also have before you, based on recent legislation, application of the statutory exemption under CEQA, which I think also fits within the parameters for this project. I did not hear anything specific as to facts that would warrant additional environmental review here, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I ask Yolanda a quick question? Thank you for that info. We heard from a few of the residents about the school that future children will go to. Do we know which elementary school?
We do not.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Looks like the applicant would like to have an opportunity to speak.
Chair Rosine, members of the Planning Commission, again, my name is Michael Torres here on behalf of the applicant. Just to respond briefly to Commissioner Reed's question, our understanding is the jurisdiction will go to Lincoln Elementary, so they're not going to Anderson, they're going to go to Lincoln. We also have our architect, Michael Schrock, here from Urban Arena. And he'd like to just speak with you for a couple minutes and kind of walk through the design. I know there were a few questions about that from some of the speakers.
Mr. Schrock, if you could keep your comments for three minutes.
Absolutely. Michael Schrock with Urban Arena. I'm actually a resident of Newport Beach for many years. I'm here, if you could bring up the slides, that'd be great. But while we're waiting, I wanted to address a couple things that I heard, and it was sad. Everybody said, oh, that looks like an abomination, that was one, the architecture. We're actually known for this indoor/outdoor architecture. And you see four stories, and you'll see on the massing model, it's actually a three-story building that masses up to four-story. And interestingly, my son and daughter are both moving out of state for exactly because in Newport Beach, there's nowhere for them to go. And that is the reality. We have to provide somewhere for our kids to live here. And I know several people. And then another person said, you know what, I didn't know about this meeting, I didn't know about this project. And all I know is I went recently to a Port Street resident's 60th birthday party, and I was told, I was, oh, you're the guy who designed that apartment complex. And I go, what are you talking about? The one on Ford Road, the apartment complex? I would go, those aren't apartments. And they said, yes, they are. And they showed me a picture of this block, very blocky thing, and I'm like, that's not what's being proposed. So I wanted to just go on record. These are not apartments. These are probably going to be the highest-priced townhomes built. And then design-wise, this was actually designed to model a house that was recently built in Ford Road, in Port Streets. We actually took that picture and then created aesthetics. Go ahead. So there was a reaction. We actually turned these buildings to be the edge, and Jerry talked about it. And by the way, you've done a very good job. And he was honest with every little detail. But if you look at this, you're not actually seeing four-story, you're actually seeing three-story, and the four-story pops back. And what you're actually seeing in the four-story is actually an open balcony. There's actually, in that shot, on both ends, there's five balconies that you're seeing on the ends of the buildings. So instead of a typical urban condition where you would have a long, tall building along the main street, we actually took two buildings so that there's gaps in between. And there's almost 33 feet in between these buildings. Go ahead. And so this is coming from the other way. And by the way, another idea for parking, for everybody who doesn't know, Ford Road used to be Bonita Canyon. That's why it's so wide. An idea for the city. You guys should look at potentially striping, you have the right of way to stripe it diagonally. You could add 50 spices down from the entrance to Port Streets to the pickleball court easily just with striping. So these are views. We don't hide anything. Typically, people just give elevations. We build these entire things in three-story in massing models so that all the edge along the alleys and all the edge is actually three stories building up to two stories, and there's decks in all directions. And these aren't decks like you would see in an apartment complex. These are lanais. They're deep, they're almost double the size that is required by the city for private open space. And most units have two stacked on top of each other. So it's not only double size, it's double dimension. And we've carefully worked out the details as stone and brick. And we have two, we only have four buildings, we've actually done two completely different building types, even though four buildings typically wouldn't be doing that. The materials are literally taken from homes in the Port Streets. You can see too. And then the parking, I just wanted to point out, every single unit gets a two-car garage. And someone said, well, how do you police people putting stuff in the garage? The way it is done by the HOA is, and we've done this many times in many communities, you have to have windows, and we do, in every garage, and there's literally an HOA policeman that comes and looks in the windows of the garages in the HOA, and they are able to find the people. And it actually works quite well.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
It actually works quite well.
Everyone has an opportunity to speak.
I do agree with one lady who said that the city is not going to do that, but the HOA actually does that, and they use fines, and they're very effective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Commissioners, any comments? Mr. Langford.
Thank you, Chair Rosine. I don't usually do this, but I just wanted to add some credibility and comfort to my fellow Port Streeters. I'm born and raised in the Port Streets, 0 to 18, and now raising my family there for the last five years, so 25 years there. Came back from Hope Hospital on Ford Road, because back then, as one of the gentlemen said, MacArthur, and Ford Road went all the way to MacArthur before Bonita Canyon was there, so that was the main arterial to go in and pass by the AT&amp;T Building. It's just interesting that, nothing had been done until now, but now we have a new project here. But it's a thoughtful village. We like our Port Streets, we're a passionate people, so I'm glad everyone came out, and I appreciate everyone coming out. I've been getting emails, not only to our NewportBeachCA.gov email addresses, but also through the Port Streets, which I've been reading as well. And people have been thoughtful, and they care a lot about our community. And we've been around long enough. My dad was the HOA president back in the 90s. My wife is president of the swim team, and so we're just very involved, and we love all the people, but we're passionate. And so I think one of the gentlemen, and maybe my Marine Corps lieutenant will remember that even Port Carlo Circle, Port Tiffin Circle, Port Stanhoof Circle, they weren't even built there until the 90s. And so that was like a big hullabaloo back then about whether those would add vehicle trips or parking issues, those kind of 16 units. But now I can't even imagine the Port Streets without those people. And we love those people, and we go to their homes, and we know their children. So I kind of see these townhomes as kind of a future where we're going to know those people, and we're going to know their children, and we're going to go to the parks. The project that was proposed, I think, is thoughtful in every way that I would have been like, well, I wish it wasn't as high, but that's exactly what we've been going over the last six years with the housing element. We're required, we've been required to do this as a city. We didn't want to do it, it was from the state. Our philosophy, from the City Council down, was put together a plan to comply with the, for a housing element, and now we have a certified housing element. And what we heard back from some developers, well, we can't meet the 20-acre, or 20 dwelling unit per acre minimum requirement if we can't go a little higher. So over the last year and even just a couple months ago, we raised the height limits a little bit. So I would have problems kind of baiting and switching our developers in the area where we have a certified housing element, we have the code, and we have it all out there, and they're trying to adhere to all these things. So this is probably the best project that I've seen that's come through since this housing element cycle. So I'm inclined to support it, but I just wanted to let my fellow Port Street family know that those are my rationale for why I think it's good. I think townhomes are better than apartments. The density, we can't go lower than 20 dwelling units an acre, and we're already at the minimum threshold. And the height is kind of how we get there. We can't, the EMF stuff is not really in our jurisdiction, and I just want my community to know that we've thought long and hard about this, we've all read all the letters, we've gone through lots and lots of documents. So it's not easy to grow, but we think we're doing it in a thoughtful manner. So I'm hoping that it becomes, our village kind of grows, our family grows a little bit more. And so those are my comments.
Commissioners? I'll go ahead and, you know, I too took pause when I saw how tall this building was. But knowing that our City Council has already acted on this, I think that ship has sailed, and it's really not any longer, we really, there's really not much we can do about that from my perspective. You could take it up with your council. Other items that I think are critical are the fact that this is for-sale housing. We should all be thankful that our developer that's bringing this forward is bringing forward for-sale housing and not another apartment building. The architecture, yes, it's four stories, but I will tell you that from my perspective, the architect has done a pretty good job of making this building look and be successful based on, when it's executed and the construction takes place, I think that what, this foundation for good architecture is definitely here. And I'm going to be supportive of this project because of that. So those are my, excuse me, those are my comments. Commissioner Elmore?
Yeah, thanks. I have a five-year-old boy, a two-year-old boy. They play soccer, they play sports at that field. I'm very aware of drop-off, pickup, traffic congestion, the likes of it. I live it, I breathe it, I understand it. We are a planning commission, we are not a city council. The definition of a planning commission is we have to interpret the city code as it pertains to the application. We have to make sure that the findings are compliant within the code of the city, and we did make those determinations with this body, which is black and white, it's not subjective. The city code has to adhere to a state code. The state, the governor, brought down a housing mandate called arena allocation. The city has to comply with that, and that's what this body has to make determinations upon. So from our perspective, it's white, black, and white, as much as nobody wants it to be as a father of two that understands some of the conditions, the area, the landscape, and has to adhere to what a planning commissioner does. I understand both sides of this. But as it sits on the face of it, the height is in compliance per code, the traffic is compliance per code, the parking is in compliance per code. Does it, is it logical, does it make sense, in terms of the way that you see it when it's there? Maybe not, but the code is drafted the way its code is drafted, and it's in compliance, and that's our job to make that interpretation. Cell tower within that, the health ramifications are out of our jurisdiction, we cannot opine on that. The sound, there was environmental studies surrounding that, it's in compliance, the noticing was in compliance. So as much as everybody has the opinions and feelings, and we all do around all of this, our job are to make determinations. this, our job are to make determinations based upon the code and the compliance as a planning commission, not a city council member. For those reasons, we, I am going to be in support of this because it's in compliance of the code, and that's what this body's job is to do, and we are, in effect, doing our job. I'll be supportive, and I'm happy to make a motion to that effect because it's in compliance to support this item with the, in addition to that, with the condition on number 44 to add, with the add-on from staff as well. And I think, I think that's where I stand on this.
If you may, if you could also add the statutory exemption, it's not included in the agenda, but.
In addition to the statutory exemption, it's not included, yes.
Commissioners, do we have a sec, there's a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Moving on to the next item, these are motions for reconsideration. Commissioners, are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none. The next item is report by the Community Development Director.
Good evening, Chair. I'm Emilio, Deputy Director. No major update, just want to inform the commission that we do have three public hearing items for the next Planning Commission meeting on July 17th.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And as commissioners, are there anything that wants to be brought up for addition, for future meetings? Then our next item would be, we're excused. Oh, excused absences, that's correct. Do we have any requests for excused absences?
Yes, I will not make the 17th meeting due to new babies in my family.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Hearing that, we are adjourned.